We'll call to order tonight's El Dorado City Commission meeting, regular meeting for March 16th, 2020. Tabitha Roca.
Mayor Young.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Right here.
Commissioner Wilkerson.
Present.
We have Pastor Corey Landreth with Real Life Church here tonight to deliver the invitation.
You ready for that?
I am absolutely ready for it.
Okay, I am Corey Landreth, pastor at Real Life. We're the ones that meet in the Civic Center until today, probably. So, let's pray. Lord God, tonight, we're scared. For the first time in many of our lives, we are unsure of the future. We have grown accustomed to our comfort. We have found faith in ourselves and our conveniences. We have become entrenched in our own values, and we've forgotten how to function if others disagree. We have believed that faith in our nation, our political party, or our own abilities would somehow save us. We have forgotten our past mistakes and so recreated them instead of having learned from them. Lord God, tonight, we're feeling uncertain. For many, the things we have come to rely on, to expect, are now crumbling at our feet. We forgot that this nation was founded on the promise of life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness, and we have come to expect it as a right. We're wondering what to do with our kids. Will we still have jobs? Will we be able to make it through this and keep our homes? Tonight, God, fear is our common enemy. And I fear that we've made the least important things to you, the most important things to us. Lord God, we failed. We failed to protect life unless it is our own. We failed to love our neighbors unless they agree with us. We failed to follow your ways unless we can twist them to support our own. We have failed to honor those who came before us, and we have failed to put our trust in your Son, Jesus Christ. And now we wonder what the future might hold. Jesus said this in John 10, that "A thief is only there to steal, kill, and destroy." And God, it sure feels like the thief is doing just that today, stealing our faith, killing our hope, and destroying our common bond with one another. But Jesus also reminded us that He came so that we could have real and eternal life, more and better than we have dreamed of. God, we need that hope because right now our dreams are filled with worry and fear. And so we look to you to replace our fears with faith and hope. Faith in you and each other, and hope in a better tomorrow. And so I ask you tonight, first of all, for a quick end to this virus, both here at home and around the world. I ask you tonight for wisdom for our local and national leaders. I ask you tonight for innovation, discovery, and a barrier of protection for those on the front lines, those at the CDC, the State Health Department, and certainly for those working in our local hospitals and doctors' offices. For doctors, nurses, and healthcare professionals, as well as the support staff, who will all be worn out from overwork and underappreciation. I ask you tonight to be with those on the road for long hours, making sure that stores have what they need for the people they serve. I ask you tonight to bless those working the land, farmers, and ranchers and their families. I ask you tonight to protect those among us that are most valuable and most vulnerable. I ask you tonight to help your church be the church, even when we can't have church as we've come to know it. I ask you tonight to help us replace fear with faith in you and each other. For calm to replace chaos, I pray for truth to replace fiction, and for love to replace hate. God, you are the God of love and hope and peace, and we could use all of those right now. Would we find comfort in your care and hope in your hands? And most of all, would we find salvation through your Son, Jesus? I pray these things tonight for each one of us and everyone in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. All right, if everyone please rise and join us for a quick release. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we don't have any proclamations or recognitions tonight. We do have a couple of personal appearances. Before we get into those, I wanted to just kind of share with those of you here and with the public watching, kind of the city's position, the city's statement on this COVID-19 virus. We've made some adjustments down at City Hall, and we'll continue to do that throughout. So I've just got a statement here to read and to get it on the record. The city of El Dorado takes the health of our community and employees very seriously. To that end, the city has considered various actions to prevent the spread of the coronavirus. Some measures will require temporary modification of public services to mitigate possible spread of the infection to employees and to the general public. The city will implement the following immediate actions to prevent the spread of the coronavirus in our community. City facilities will temporarily close to the general public. The drive-through window at City Hall will remain open to accept utility payments from Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Trash bags will be unavailable for purchase until the lobby is opened again. Trash routes and utility services will operate as provided under normal circumstances. Police and fire departments will operate with minor modifications to protect our first responders so as to ensure continued emergency services. The senior center and activities center will be closed, and all adult and youth activities are suspended until further notice. The city will not reserve any facilities or parks until further notice, so please contact City Hall to check the status of any existing reservations. The police department requests that all non-critical incident reports be provided by telephone. So please call 316-321-9120, 316-321-9120, to speak with someone at the police department to file a non-critical report with our police department. Municipal court will be closed until at least March 23rd. All records requests should be made through the open records link on the city's website. And city commission meetings will remain open to the public, although depending on the size of the group, the city may separate the governing body and the public, and will provide participation via television and conference call. All municipal services remain operational, and all city employees remain available to assist the public during regular business hours. Citizens may contact city departments by phone at 321-9100. And information regarding the COVID-19 outbreak constantly changes. The city will post updated information about our response to any changes to municipal services on the city's website at www.eldokos.com, and also on our official social media outlets on Facebook and Twitter. The city of El Dorado will continue to closely monitor the situation, and we will make service changes as deemed necessary and prudent for the safety of employees and our general public. The city's priority will be providing essential public services that our community relies on each and every day. To that end, we encourage, we will encourage employees to self-quarantine when appropriate. We will seek to create a working environment that balances employee health with the provision of public service. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment encourages people showing signs of COVID-19 to stay home. Sick family members should separate themselves from other people. Healthy people should continue to practice preventative measures such as frequently washing hands with soap and water, cleaning frequently touched surfaces, covering your coughs and sneezes, and avoiding touching your face. KDHU also encourages people not together in public places, which is why the city has elected to close many of its facilities to the public. We'll continue updating through our website and our social media sites as changes occur. The primary goal of our city is to, of our city staff, is to continue providing all the services that we can while keeping our staff and the public around us as healthy as we can. So, we appreciate the citizens of El Dorado and our constituents and their support in this. Our city staff work hard every day, and it's important to provide, try to provide the safest environment that we can for them to work in. That's it. So, we're going to move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations to make special presentations before the city commission. They schedule these personal appearances in advance with our city clerk, Tabitha Sharp. They generally need to be scheduled by the Tuesday before the meeting, so by last Tuesday. We've got a couple tonight. I think the first one that we have is Jamie Downs from the Butler County Health Department. Come on up.
Good evening.
Hello.
I was kind of requested to come discuss with you what I discussed with the county commissioners last week, which from your proclamation you just read, a lot of that's there. But I'll go ahead, and then, I'm trying to condense it down to 10 minutes, so if I run out of time, just give me the signal. One of the first things is to understand coronavirus. It's been around since the 1960s. There's many different forms of coronavirus, and everyone in here has had some form, has had a coronavirus, the corona-human, which is the common cold. Some other types of coronavirus is the Middle East Respiratory Syndrome, or what we now know as MERS. The Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome, or SARS, those are both types of coronaviruses. And of course, the newest one that we're dealing with, which we are calling COVID-19, that's actually the disease, the virus, is now SARS-CoV-2. The first SARS is SARS-CoV-1, so it's kind of the same family. It was first detected back in late 2019 due to an outbreak or an investigation near the Wuhan Huai province in China. So how does it spread? It spreads through respiratory droplets, so through uncovered sneezes and coughs. Those droplets spread, and anyone nearby, it can enter through the nose, the eyes, inhale it into the lungs. So that's why we really encourage that covering of the mouth, the sneezes and the coughs, the constant washing of hands. It can also be on surfaces, so again, constant cleaning of the surfaces. Some of the symptoms includes fever, cough, shortness of breath, which can mirror a lot of other symptoms as well. Usually appear within two to 14 days after exposure. And we know that about 80% of the patients that are infected only have mild symptoms. It's only the severe ones that end up at the hospital because it's went into pneumonia or something worse. And the disease can infect anybody. It doesn't discriminate. The most at risk are frail elderly and are medically fragile patients. And children, even though they can get it, we know that worldwide, only about 2% of children are actually getting infected. And the last statistics I saw, only one child between the ages of 11 and 18 has died from it, and this is worldwide. How can we prevent it? As you were saying, wash your hands, use soap and water, and for 20 seconds. Sing that Happy Birthday song twice, or sing the alphabet song two or three times, and really, you know, scrub them. If you don't have soap and water, using alcohol-based hand sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth with unwashed hands. Cover your coughs and your sneezes. Use a tissue. If you don't have a tissue, use your elbow, your shirt sleeve. And if you do the tissue, throw it away and then go wash your hands. Stay home if you're sick. I can't repeat that enough. And if someone's, you know, if you're sitting somewhere and someone comes up beside you and they're sick, get up and move. And again, avoiding that close contact with someone who's sick. We know with this virus, when we talk close contact, we're talking six feet for 10 or more minutes. So just walking up to someone, handing them something, walking away, your risk of exposure is very minimal. And if you want to know cleaning solutions that have been proven to kill the COVID-19, you can go to the EPA website. There's a list there. As you said, and as the mayor said, things are constantly changing, new information, new updates. When it comes to testing, the newest guidance is, of course, if you feel you have it, call ahead to your provider. Don't just walk in. Don't walk in anywhere. Call ahead. But the newest thing that we're supposed to ask anyone that calls us is, if it wasn't for the COVID-19, would you be seeking medical care for this? And if the answer's no, then just stay home, quarantine yourself till your fever breaks. And of course, as some of you already probably know, over the weekend, KDHU changed their travel guidance. It had been, you know, international travel. They are now including if anyone's traveled, is coming from Washington, California, or New York, after March 15th, they need to self-quarantine. If they've traveled to Eagle, Summit, Pittkin, or Gunnison Counties in Colorado within the past week, when they return to the state, they need to self-quarantine for 14 days. Traveling on a cruise ship, when they return, self-quarantining for 14 days. And any international travel after, coming back after March 15th, self-quarantining. And I do want to stress, there is a difference between quarantine and isolation. So when we talk quarantine, we're basically saying, stay home. Don't go to school functions, don't go out to work, don't, stay at home. When we talk isolation, that person needs to isolate in a room with nobody else. It can be in their home, but like in a separate bedroom where nobody else is going to be going in there. We're quarantining, everyone in the family can be intermingling. Isolation, they're by themselves from the rest of their family. And I do, I know that Commissioner Wilkinson had talked to me the other day about the presumptive positive. What does that mean? When someone is tested for COVID, it's a, they do two swabs. They do a nasal swab and a throat swab. If both of those come back negative, the test is negative. If one of them is positive, then it's presumptive positive. We're presuming that they have it. And then the samples are then sent to the CDC for a confirmatory test. But in that meantime, we're treating them as if they have it, and we're doing the isolation. So I just wanted to clarify that. A couple of websites that I would encourage anyone to, for accurate information, KDHU has, on their website, has a coronavirus page, and they're updating it every day with numbers of positives, with negatives. The CDC has their own coronavirus website as well. And when it comes to businesses preparing for the outbreak, you know, some things to think about, you know, have a plan to continue your essential business functions, which you're already doing. Cross-train personnel to perform essential functions, so if you have someone that's going to be gone. Encouraging sick employees to stay home. Educate and reinforce hand washing. Provide alcohol-based hand sanitizer in the workplace. And review your communication plans, discuss and plan for possible closure. And then assess the community reliance on your services, your products, and what will you do if that's disrupted, which it sounds like you're already thinking about that. I do have just some basic information, spreadsheet from the CDC, again, talking about just the facts, what it is, how it spread. And then there's a family action plan. So as your family, you can see, what do we need to do if you're sick with COVID-19? How to reduce the spread? And then there's the hotline number for KDHU. It is manned, they just changed it. It is now manned Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 7:00. They've added Saturday, 10:00 to 2:00, and Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00, so for the general public that has any questions about COVID-19. And one of the things we're trying to do with the social distancing, the mass gatherings that you're seeing, hearing that, is to reduce the curve of illness. Because if we can spread out our resources, they're going to last longer versus if we have a spike, which is what happened in China, what's happening in Italy. I like the analogy that my minister gave at church yesterday. You know, everyone's rushing into Walmart to get that toilet paper. Well, what if all those same people were rushing into the ER at the same time? Who's going, you know, who's going to get the services? There's only so many ventilators, there's only so many staff, so many doctors. So when we start talking about the social distancing and not gathering in masses, it's because we're trying to make sure that the resources are there for everybody that's going to need them. And in closing, I just think we should take a lesson from our childcare providers because they have to have an illness policy that they have to follow. They have to wash and sanitize their toys every day or more often, whenever they're contaminated. And they have to wash their hands at the beginning of the day, before they prep a meal, before eating, after eating, after toileting, after changing diapers, after touching, dealing with any kind of bodily fluids, when they come in from outside, when they, after messing with a pet, and even more often. And we know that our providers that follow these guidelines have very little illness in their facilities. So stay calm, be prepared, wash your hands, and you don't need to buy all the toilet paper.
Thank you so much.
Question, Jamie.
Yes.
What exactly is, I mean, you're director of the Butler County Health Department. What exactly are the duties of the Health Department?
The duties of the Health Department is to protect the public from disease, prevent outbreaks, basically to protect and prevent. And part of the Health Department, part of what we also do is, well, I'm also the health officer for Butler County, and so by state statute, I have the authority, if need be, to shut down schools, shut down activities, the mass gathering numbers.
So some of those decisions can come from your department?
Yes. But I'll tell you, I, before any decision's ever made, I take a lot of things into consideration. I also talk to my board of health, the county commissioner, or the county commissioners, the county administrator, because like with the school closings, there's so much to consider. You know, kids need to eat, will they be unattended? If the parents stay home, what does that mean for their workplace? Some things we learned today I hadn't thought about is, you know, other people may be flying into the state then to take care of those kids that are going to be home because school's out. Well, look what we just brought into the state, maybe. So, a lot of things to think about. So nothing is taken lightly. And we, here in Butler County, even though we had our one positive last Friday, and he is home, doing well, finishing his isolation there, but you know, we took a step back and it's like, you know, we're not going to do a knee-jerk reaction. We really want to take everything into consideration before we start putting some policies out there. And I know tomorrow, the county commission meeting, so a lot of these things are going to be discussed and what the next step may be.
Thank you.
Jamie, last Thursday, Wentworth Hospital closed. Or Wellington, I'm sorry, Wellington. And I know we've had discussions with SBA for the last, have you contacted them? Have you talked to them? How's their status?
We, well, we have been for the last probably, since the first part of February, have been meeting with both hospitals here in Butler County, and 911 Communications, EMS, Emergency Management, and when we, and we actually met with the hospital today, too. And they seem to be doing okay. But you know, we know that it's ever-changing there, too.
I'm sorry, that did not inspire any confidence in me, what you just said, in the way you just said it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seriously, I mean, that, that's...
No, because we actually called on Friday and offered assistance, like for screenings, for testing, and they're like, we've got it covered. We have it worked out. I know I've been in touch with the lab, head of the lab there, and she says they're trained, they have what they need, they're ready to go. Now, if you meant the closing, I have no idea what...
No, no, and that's not your world. It's just that it's very similar to what we have going on right now. What I would absolutely hate to see is the same thing happen
Yes.
Two days from now, three days from now. So that's why I would want to make sure that you... Where is the other hospital in the county, just so?
Andover, Kansas Medical Center.
Okay, I just wanted, that way it's out there. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jamie.
We have another personal appearance for El Dorado Inc. And I will cover this as being the representative for the city of El Dorado. Over the last year or more, a little bit more than that, we've been meeting as a group of organizations, which are made up of Butler Community College, Main Street, the El Dorado Chamber of Commerce, the City of El Dorado, City of El Dorado Convention and Visitors Bureau, and at times, we've been fortunate to have Workforce Alliance be part of our partnership. And all this started, oh, probably a year and a half ago, a group of us, so myself, Susie Carson from the Chamber, when she was with the Chamber, Kelly Stedden with Butler, Emily Cannell with El Dorado Main Street, and Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc. Took a trip to Pittsburgh, Kansas. And what we were hoping to gather from that was the concept that they use down there, how to collaborate as a team and how to work through projects. A lot of times, what we don't want to have happen is someone make contact with one committee, and then this person get passed around to multiple different groups. So we came up with the idea, kind of following Pittsburgh's best practices, to meet weekly, and we've been doing that over the last year for about no more than 30 minutes. It's strict timeline, sit down, talk about projects, talk about things that you need help with, or what other entity could best take the lead on. Because what we want to have is a business come in, business want to do something, and we don't want to say, well, you need to call her for that and him for this. So it's a collaborative effort, and it's worked quite well. And so as a group, they, we are all making the rounds to all of our entities that we're responsible for, and just sharing a little highlight of what's happened over the last year. And by no means are these all projects every entity has worked on, there's lots more. But these are the ones that we have collaborated on over the last year. So in total, we could track 53 projects. 20 of those projects have followed through, are complete, and they're done. Got 16 things that are still out there being worked on, and 17 that are inactive. So for some reason or the other, they just didn't proceed with their initial request or whatever they're looking for. You can see in that next column, partners' participation, so each one of those partners, what, you know, how involved they were with those projects. And then the different breakdown level, the types of services. So work on with folks from anywhere, from help needing funding, side assistance, incentives, marketing, how they can get training, workforce help with Workforce Alliance. I just want to say, it's been a great practice, and it's really helped. And I believe Linda Jolly and Emily Cannell and Jordan Buckson are out here, and if you have any questions of them all, we'd be happy to answer. But wanted to give you just a real quick brief of the work we've been doing last year, how we've been trying to collaborate on these. how we've been trying to collaborate on these.
Can you give some examples of some of these completed and pending projects?
Completed could be anywhere from, um, big ones like Union Tank Car. So they needed a lot of things where Butler was involved with trying to make connection with welding services. The city was involved in trying to get infrastructure to them and incentives along with El Dorado Inc., Chamber assisted in there as well. And then we have projects we talk about like, that are occurring downtown, like the District 142, the CDB grant that's been in front of you. And how each entity can bring a value to that project or that owner or that prospective business.
So the column in the middle where it says Partner Participation, those seven partners or organizations, those were the number of what projects they were involved in?
Yeah, so not, not every project needed expertise of one of those. Like if it was out of Main Street's district, Emily could provide some help, but, you know, not necessarily in her district or maybe they weren't looking for a training opportunity, so Butler wouldn't have been involved. So it's kind of unique on, on what entity brings what to the discussion and the perspectives.
So basically, the seven organizations or seven groups of people listed at the bottom are saying that you're able to accomplish more working together because you have the expertise you need in different areas? And that by meeting, what'd you say, weekly?
Weekly, yep, for 30 minutes, yep.
And you feel like you're getting something accomplished?
Well, what it helps is, is not making multiple phone calls or someone chasing a rabbit hole this way, a rabbit hole this way, trying to get different answers. And we can all talk openly about who we're working with, what we're working on. And, and then just assign one person to either leave with that prospect or that business or that entity.
But basically, everybody shares working together?
Yep.
Unless it's an area that they don't?
Yeah, and, and everyone's involved in all the discussions, any of the projects. Now granted, they aren't all encompassing, so not every project is on this list. Every entity's busy doing other things as well. These are ones that we, we can get value out of multiple entities being involved in. Where someone come into me, like some of the items you'll see tonight, or this may not be a best reference, but a special use permit for something. Well, they may just need to talk to me and none of the other folks really need to be involved in that. But if they're looking for incentives, if they're looking for help creating business plans, if they're looking for how do they find employees, that's when we all get involved and talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So looking at that middle section, the Partner Participation piece, like not necessarily for tonight, because this is really just an overview. But do you have the ability to kind of give us kind of a rundown of, to what capacity each of those, you know, how the project's fleshed out? And like how each of these, the college or the chamber or Inc. man's reentering, how each of them, kind of how they contributed, whether it was through funding or facilitation or communication or grants, or, you know, kind of how that, how that fleshed out in the conversations?
Yep, we can, we can get that put together. This was a high-level right here presentation for tonight.
Sure, no, I understand that.
So if we.
And I like this. I mean, I like what we're seeing. I just, I want to, you know, that'd help me just kind of help us dive in a little bit to really kind of understand a little more of what that interaction looks like and kind of how those, you know, how the. I'd be curious a little bit to know how those, I think it's interesting that you're able to get seven organizations in a room and knock out a 30-minute meeting, so.
It is, Linda is a great timekeeper, so we keep on scheduling on tasks.
So as you guys, so is this, this is put together as personal appearance with regards to El Dorado Inc. Or is this?
So, yeah.
Were these numbers put together by, by the partner group? I mean, as far as input?
Yep, they were, they were emailing that.
Tallying up all the projects that each, each of these groups are able to work on?
They were, they were emailed around. We each kind of can try to come up with a little tagline of how we could sell what we've been doing. And you'll see Kelly Sneddon's quote up here. We each kind of had our own little quote. Kelly's quote was, when these partners come together, we amplify our ability to grow El Dorado. So we kind of talked about little taglines and I believe Kelly will be talking to the trustees whenever she's able to get that scheduled and present the same information as well. I know that Linda reported the Inc. Board of Directors or the Inc. Regular Meeting not too long ago on her side.
I'd be curious kind of how, again, that mainly in that participation piece, how all of those, how those shared projects fleshed out.
Sure, we, we can get, we can get that and David can send out a weekly report to you.
So the purpose of this would be to improve customer service?
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, and, and even things like, you know, last week we were talking about, just because you have this group that represents so many different organizations. We talked about COVID-19 and Kelly briefly said that this is what Butler's thinking about. Just so everyone can kind of have an understanding and, and get that information out. Just situations like that.
Greg, Matt, do you guys have anything?
Good.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
We have, and our next on the agenda is public comments or persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. And speakers are limited to three minutes, so. Any, if you have any presentation during that time, that's for information purposes only and we won't take action during public comments. So do I have anybody here who wants just to make public comment? Come on up, would you mind coming up to the podium and giving us your name?
Yeah, Lance Coats. I just moved into town in December. I'm from Pawlone originally.
Welcome.
Thank you. I really like it over here.
Good.
Went to school here, worked at a refinery a lot. Today I was watching a little bit of Trump going over the COVID-19 and got to thinking, and I've actually been thinking about it a little bit, about the people that get quarantined and how they are going to be able to, if you've got a whole family quarantined in there, how are you going to get out and get meals? How are you going to get the things that you need? I would like to look at, or have you guys look at, or however, I'm not sure how this would work. I just wanted to bring up the idea of maybe some volunteers getting together, being able to go through something with the city or the county to go pick up these things, take it to them, drop them on their porch. The reason I think we need to go through an organization like you guys, there's too many things we've seen where Amazon, people get their stuff taken off the porches. There are people out here that have taken advantage of this. So I think it would be a good deal to be able to go through here. I'm currently laid off. I would volunteer my time. I'm a quality control manager for large construction projects, superintendent, that type of thing. I have something that would be very easy for me to help with, set up and tell what time I do actually go back to work with. This may affect that quite a bit, so. Just wanted to bring it up. I had a lot of ideas on it. I wouldn't mind getting with somebody and going over it. If you guys have something already going, it's fine. I just thought I'd like to bring that up to get it in everybody's mind. Hopefully, we won't need this, but there could be a lot of people out here that can't get out to get stuff, and I think we need to try and help them out. I think you could get volunteers. We could work with the county, I think. I've talked to Jamie here a little bit before we came in. I think the Health Department would be involved. I think we could get donations to help with whatever we needed for gas or anything like that. But I just think you need somebody to come in and, and work on it that has time to do that. That's why I thought I'd volunteer to, to help out. I can leave my information for anybody if.
What'd you say your na, last name was?
Coats, C-O-A-T-S.
Okay, make sure I got it down right.
Yeah, that's, I can leave my information with you guys if you'd like and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind leaving your information with Tammy, this would be better if we.
I can even set up a resume as you can see what I've done if you'd like, but I've got a lot of people around.
The fact that you're willing to do it, I think is.
You need, I, I've got time right now. I'm not working. I'm still moving stuff from Pawlone over to here. But, you know, we've, I spend too much time sitting around and watching TV, so I need something to keep my mind going, so I'd like.
I think we've just found our coronavirus czar for City of El Dorado.
I don't know about that, but I, I would.
Find your patch.
I would be willing to help out until I do get, I get a job, I gotta go. But I work out of town most of the time. Refineries looking, trying to put me in or, but all that stuff takes time and everything's really slow right now, so.
Sure.
But I'll get my information to you. You guys get ahold of me. I'll send you whatever you need and whatever ideas I have. I don't want to take up too much of this time.
I appreciate that. I really do appreciate it.
Well, no problem. It was, I need something to do and I, I thought about doing it through Facebook, but like I said, I think that gets a little sketchy and people get ideas and start doing things. I didn't think it was the right thing to do, so.
Well, I'm personally happy to have you in town. Welcome to town, Mr. Coats, and thank you for, for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Corey said earlier, you know, this is certainly not a time that we, as communities, need to find as many opportunities we can to come together and take care of each other. And so again, Mr. Coats, I appreciate, appreciate you coming up and we'll, we'll get, we'll figure something out.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, with that or anything else that you need right now.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else here for public comment? Perfect. We're going to move on to then the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I moved that to consent agenda as presented, be approved.
I've got one question before we approve it. On the Surrymont Beveries license, if they cannot have that event, will they be able to read?
If you approve it tonight, then you're approving the license and we, we've had to reschedule it for.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If it's close, same sign. Motion carries five up. Nothing in old business. New business, industrial park marketing, funding request.
On Wednesday, the City Commission heard a proposal from El Dorado Inc. to facilitate the marketing or industrial platform. We've kind of come up with, with our industrial master plan. Really, the, the key pitch behind that is kind of two-fold. Number one, to look at targeted industries that would meet the city's strengths and assets, namely the ability or ability to sell up to 10 million gallons of, of water per day to industrial water user. And then in addition to that, we also have available large tracts of land to develop with rail access and highway access. So we feel like if we match those strengths up with companies that require a lot of water, that we can facilitate the development of industrial projects, not only in our West Industrial Park, but also in some other large tracts we've identified as well. So to facilitate this, El Dorado Inc. and the city are proposing a partnership whereby we would do a two, two-pronged approach to the marketing campaign. The first would be continuing our partnership with Candid Marketing. And the second piece is with Kansas Global Partners. And that organization out of Wichita actually will provide the data analysis with, with an AI, artificial intelligence algorithm that will seek to identify companies that are looking to expand and that have a high probability of expanding within our region. So we'll marry that data with a marketing campaign that, again, sells or markets our community's assets. And by doing that, we hope to be proactive in our marketing campaign by identifying companies that fit, fit that bill, if you will. The price tag on this is going to be about $55,000, about $50,000 for the city for, for the initial year. But we're envisioning this to be a three-year partnership between the city and El Dorado Inc. so we can facilitate a sustainable approach to the campaign. So what we're asking the commission to consider is paying for the sales portion of this, which is about, again, a little over $50,000 from the economic development sales tax, which has been appropriated at $100,000 for economic, economic development purposes. So with that, I'll take any questions that you all may have regarding the campaign or moving forward.
I've got one very specific question, and I'm going to hold everybody to it. One question. This is approving it for one year, not three, correct?
Um, yeah, we, we come back every year.
You'll come back every year? What I don't want isn't a year. It's, oh, we said it was going to be three years and blah, blah, blah. So it's one-year approval?
Yeah, the way that the sales tax has to work, has to be approved every year.
Okay, then just double check it.
No, absolutely.
Okay, my question is, we talked about the outside money that's coming in. Did you, did Inc. talk about that or? I mean, are they willing to, to do that, to give the city credit for half of what they collect or?
I, I can't answer that question.
It was a discussion that everybody was agreeing, but no decision was made.
Well, then I don't think I can make a decision either.
So I was not here Wednesday night, and you all discussed this piece of it, so. Were you talking about the capital campaign to? If donations are made to the project through outside, through private, private industry, Nick wants the credit to go both to Inc. and to the city, not just to Inc.'s.
If it's a true partnership, I feel it should, both partners should benefit from that.
Additional thoughts, Kendra? So the total that you're looking at from the city, I'm trying to read this. The request is for 50.
Thank you.
With a deposit of 25. Right, why does that write that's, I, I thought that was what it's. What's, what's the total amount, total amount being paid for this project?
The total amount would be $100,000 for the first year. So the city and Inc. are paying 50/50. So our portion is 50, $50,000.
And so that, so what you're asking about, Nick, is if, if our partner goes out and does a capital campaign and raises $20,000 in their capital campaign, then you're, you're asking that, that that be applied to the partnership and not just to their side?
Correct, and we were told at the work session that's, they have 15 now.
Something like that, something like that.
Now, every year for the three years, will the city be taking theirs out of the excess sales tax?
Yes, that's the plan. So you'll recall that when the sales tax was passed, the amount allocated to economic development increased from $50,000 to $100,000. So the city by ordinance has $100,000 that it can allocate to economic development purposes. So the idea that we would do is we would just pay our contribution out of that $100,000 that is annually allocated, annually available, I should say, for the economic development sales tax.
But it's not dedicated to any one. It's as the commission sees fit.
That's correct. That's why the commission would have to annually appropriate those funds. There are $100,000 available, but projects have to be approved by the commission that are, that are allocated out of that fund. That'd be correct.
And not from excess. David said yes at the beginning of that statement, but it's not excess. It's the economic development.
Okay, that's right. It comes right off the top. Did Evergy, just out of the goodness of their heart, give us the 30,000 or provide the 30,000?
Yes. Well, I think.
Do what? Do what?
We had to make application.
Okay, so it was a grant and we got it and so?
And I think part of it too is they, Evergy and West Darb Prior have been part of multiple prospects as part of it. You know, when you have a prospect come aboard, you've got utility companies you're talking to, you're talking to architects, you're talking to all these different individuals, and Evergy has seen the potential that Eldorado has. And KC P and L had quite a successful economic development arm up in Kansas City. So when those two entities merged to become Evergy, they wanted to be able to bring that kind of, that kind of process that they had going on in Kansas City down into the Wichita region. So they said, you know, we made that application. They said, we think this is a good site. They see the potential. They see the potential gain and some more power, so.
So Evergy has pledged $30,000 to this project?
It's already.
Well, they, their $30,000 was for the initial camp, the initial work that Candid did to develop.
Okay, okay, okay. So that money, that money's gone.
That money's gone.
Basically, this was a grant that Eldorado Inc. filled out and received. And the whole amount went to decrease the amount of money that was owed by the three, the two entities.
Of, of the phase one. So the phase one of the marketing was coming up with the branding. This phase two is a rollout and doing some of the research. So as you see, those numbers broke down. Evergy, $30,000, City of Eldorado, 6818, Eldorado Inc., 6818. And then there were some 360 Eldorado dollars left that were also allocated to this.
And that's repaid the $55,000 for the branding and messaging.
Right.
So this is phase two. That's $100,000. And the ask is $50,000 from the city, $50,000 from Inc. But Inc. is, if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, Inc. is gonna do a capital campaign to try and offset some of their $50,000.
Is that not in here, what you guys are looking at?
Yeah, it's in the memo.
Okay.
And your, your ask, Nick, is that, is that Inc. split?
Yeah, any money.
Inc. split the money raised to offset the partner contributions on both sides?
Yes.
I'm just trying to get it all into one conversation here. It's under the. What, what has, you guys had Inc. meeting. You said you discussed this, Linda, at the Inc.
Just at the advisory.
At the advisory meeting? What was the, just?
Not really consensus at that time.
Not what?
Not consensus. Some of the partners at the advisory, they still would have to take it to the board. And our board meeting's been canceled from my point, so.
And this is, this contract or this proposal something that we need to decide on tonight?
The senior decision's made out the sooner we can get started on it, so no, not necessarily, but. I think we'd like to get started as soon as possible, but any delay just means we, we don't get started as quick as we like.
Do we have till April?
April 1, Candid piece of the contract is run out. It's through March. The $55,000 pays through the end of March.
I think we should fund it, the $50,000 this year, and then next year, look at it and see what they're finding on the outside sources and then talk about splitting the cost. But this year, get it started to get Eldorado's name out there so we can move forward on this.
I'm sorry, I don't. I'd make a motion to table it.
Are you making a motion?
Yes. If they can't get a decision out of their board, I make a motion that we table it until we get a decision from their board.
Have a motion on the table. Is there anybody that would like to make a second?
I'll second it for the fact that right now, I don't think anybody's gonna be trying to move their company anytime soon. I think most companies right now are trying to worry about how to keep their employees, so. This is probably one of the least needed things that we need to decide right now, so. I second.
All right, I've got a motion, a second to table. So discussion.
I like the high-tech part of this, like I said, on Wednesday. I do, I really like, I like the, the new thought process that you guys are taking. I do. I'm not a big fan of Candid. I didn't really, wasn't impressed with what I saw, and I'm still not impressed with the stuff they presented to us for the other marketing plan for the, the overall city. So, I mean, that, that's where my begrudge is. I, I like what you guys are trying to do, but, you know, I didn't have the choice in that Candid decision. I'm not against it. I just.
I'm not against, I'm not against it either.
And if Nick's not comfortable until he gets, until he gets his, his question answered, I mean, I'm, I'll roll with you, Nick.
And I'm not against it. I don't understand it. It's technology, but I'm not against it. But I think if we're gonna be partners, let's be partners.
You know, Eldorado Inc. did commit 60, up to 65,000 dollars to the campaign for the last year. Not exceed 65,000 dollars.
To this, to?
Yeah, they voted to prove 65,000. That was in the second page of that request.
Right. So, okay, so to Nick's question though, that 65 or 60 or 50, whatever the amount is, is, is being offset by a capital campaign?
If we're successful, we could just go out and raise investments and ask you back some money. Back again, we didn't ask that.
Well, I mean, I.
And I don't know what they'll say. I'm just saying, Eldorado Inc. has already committed 60, not 60, $65,000 for the first year. So if we don't raise anything, then we're in for our $50,000. You know, we've also paid half of the industrial park master plan.
Can you, so that people at home can hear you?
We've also paid one-half of the $90,000 industrial park master plan. We have talked to the city about the acquisition of additional property and have agreed to pay that. But it comes to a point where we may need to do additional fundraising for this. So we think it's prudent to have a capital campaign. It's not like we're going to every door and asking for funding. We're only asking for the types of businesses where, like a West Star, where this can be valuable to them in the end. And so it's, we're not gonna be downtown asking for 50 or $100. I mean, we're going to potentially have, if they're interested, major partners. I'm not, and I said, the money will be kept separately. We can revisit this at the end of this year and see how much did come in, what did everybody spend, and we can adjust our request accordingly because we're gonna ask for three-year commitments. So we're gonna know a lot more after we have a chance and we know we're really going to do this, to come back and tell you how this has worked out.
And I would like to say, I've worked at Eldorado Inc. for.
Jennifer, can you cover?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jennifer Calloway. Doesn't everyone know that? Jennifer Calloway. I've worked at Eldorado Inc. for 16 years, I think. I've, I'm a lifelong resident. I, you know, we've done the Inc. work all these years. We respond to these RFPs that come to us from the site selectors or from the Department of Commerce. Lots of times, you don't even know what kind of company this is. They don't tell you. They just say, we need this much land, we need this much water, we might be interested in your town. And you respond, not knowing if it's a company that you want. Maybe it's something that has a lot of odor and you don't really want it. But you don't have that chance in the beginning. This approach is proactive. We get to say, we want these kinds of companies. We want companies that use water. We want companies that use land. We have, want a certain wage rate, standard of living that they can provide. It's a very different, very bold, more aggressive approach. And you may not like what you've seen of Candid. Maybe you don't like the designs or something. But they do a lot of behind-the-scenes things that you may not know. They send out electronic, they pick a list. We have Kansas Global is gonna help us pick companies that might fit what we want, that would be a good fit for Eldorado. They develop the list, the data. Candid sends out the electronic information. They track it. They track who responds. They set up this website for this purpose only, the Develop Eldorado, where people who see an ad or get an email can go directly to the website, find out more information. We track who. They will track who has responded, how many times they've visited, how much time they spent on the website. They say, this is a live fish. You need to respond back to them. It's a very sophisticated way of finding these companies that are good fits for our community. There's no guarantee that 10 are gonna respond to us, and it may take a year or two to get one. But it's, it's a more sophisticated, more targeted, better chance to get the kind of.
I think what you're saying, what I'm gonna say is, is that if you don't come back in a year with any results, I'm not gonna vote for another $50,000.
Well, we'd be able to show you what.
Well, I, I get that, but I guess what I'm saying is, is like, you, you can't, you can't, you can't expect us to just keep giving money into, into an idea that's not gonna give us anything.
True.
I mean, and that's, and I, I think that's, I, I support what, the tech side of what you're trying to do. I don't like the material you guys developed with Candid, and I've said that.
You don't like the way it looked.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't like the way that Candid, I don't like what Candid produces. I've seen a lot of examples that they produce, and I'm just not happy with what they produce.
Well, probably in a year.
Personally, and I'm one of five, so I get to have that opinion.
In a year, maybe you'll have a broader view.
Well, I, well.
And maybe they'll do well, and maybe they won't.
Well, and, and I, I get that, but what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna give you another $50,000. I'm not gonna vote for it if we don't get anything in this first year.
I'm just saying.
Because I'm, we already give you guys quite a bit of money each year.
It's worth a shot.
And you guys are the ones that keep, like, you're the ones I keep hearing about from everybody in town, that we give you guys money. Okay, and that's probably tainted my view of the situation, and I can fully admit that that's probably where my head is at. But the truth is, is that when it comes to economic development, nobody sees what you guys do. I understand because I get a lot of information from you, but the residents in this town do not see it.
I think you've got this sheet.
Yeah, I got it digitally.
Return on investment. VG Products will be paying, what is it?
Well, as of right now, what have they paid? That's right.
$2,000, $320,000 in real estate taxes. And next year, they will be increased to 711,000.
Ten years.
Oh, 20, 2021. That's, oh, that was in 2021, they'll pay 320. In 10 years, they'll be paying 711. Huge return on investment.
Right, but that was.
No guarantee that it's gonna happen, but.
Okay, well, I, I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is, is that I, I support what you're trying to do. I don't like how, what's gonna be going out in the name of Eldorado, period. That's where I'm at, okay? And I think we can just, we can just agree to disagree.
We can do that.
Nick right now is not happy with what the situation is, so he is one of, one of the five of us, and, you know, I guess we have a motion on the table.
Right, and we're in discussion.
Okay.
I'm not calling the vote yet. Kendra, do you have anything? Greg? I, I am a big fan of the technology. I'm a big fan of proactive, targeted, proactive targeted approach as opposed to a reactive approach answer our piece. Huge fan of the program. I have a similar question. My question was very similar to what Matt asked earlier, and that is what our commitment is to this. If we vote this year to, to spend the $50,000 and partner with them, what happens next year? Are we, are we signed, is Inc. or is there a three-year contract being signed that then we're gonna have to pay next year? Or we have to vote again? I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna be contractually obligated to.
Yeah, so from a strict standpoint, no one can obligate the commission to more than, I mean, you can only agree to what everyone agrees to. So if you say in a year, then we'll be back in a year. If you say 10 years, I still have to bring it back to the next government body, right? So my plan was all along, it might be a three-year commitment, but because it's a sales tax, and we're gonna use sales tax funds, then we're gonna come back and we're gonna get that approval every year from the government body. That was, I guess that was my prerogative the whole time because we, we need to have some, on the record vote of what those monies need to be used for moving forward because there's been some controversy about what those funds have been used for in the past. So I don't know if that was communicated to Inc. or not, but where I'm sitting here today, those, that decision will come back every year. Now, whether that contract that Inc. has is a three-year contract or not, we're not necessarily approving that, but we're approving a contribution to the project. That will come back every year. Now, as far as to Matt's point or Commissioner Guthrie's point, I don't know what results you guys are gonna wanna see, but I can, I can bring back that vote. I can't guarantee that there's gonna be a $10 million building built, but we'll be able to bring some kind of data analytics or something back that you can see this is all happening there. But there's not, we don't have predefined performance analytics that say, it's gonna accomplish these things. We don't have that. So that's, that's the one that kind of perplexes me. But my plan is to bring this vote back to you next year about this time and get it reauthorized.
And that's fair.
I think the, the practice of our original industrial park building out, starting in the early 80s to now it's full. And I think what we've learned in hindsight is that land is very valuable land. You know, we might have sold it off in pieces here or there and, and, and worked on trying to bring industry to town. But I think now that we're looking at, at the 100 acres the city owns out west, another 100 acres that we co-own with Inc., how to best market that to get what's gonna be the best.
Hang on, Scott. I don't think there's anyone up here that's disagreeing with, with how we, with what this could do for us. I don't, I mean, I don't think Nick is disagreeing.
Absolutely not.
I agree with that.
On this piece of paper right here, it says partner four times. Four times it says partner. All I'm saying is, let's be equal partners.
So let's, let's, let me, let me try to, as I'm listening to everyone talk, it strikes me, let me just throw an observation out. What we're looking for is not, okay, so if, if, if the city provides $50,000, and Inc. provides $50,000, we have $100,000, right? Now, let's say that there's an independent party over here, the David Donner Foundation, that's gonna contribute $50,000 more. Now, one thing that we could do is we could say, oh, since he's donated $50,000 more, we can subtract that from the two amounts here, and then each of these two amounts, they pay $25,000 each. And then we get the same amount of pain for a buck. Or we can say, well, since David Donner is such a great guy, we now have an extra funds to do the same, to do more with, right? So it's really about how much money do you wanna spend on marketing? We can buy, we can buy this amount of marketing, or we can buy this amount of marketing, or we can buy this amount of marketing. But ultimately, it's about how much marketing do you wanna buy, right? It's not about who's contributing this or who's contributing that. It's really about, can we take our dollar and can we do more with it? As opposed to can we reduce, can we reduce the pool of contribution? We really wanna increase the pool and get our message out to as many more people as possible. Fairness.
Here's, and here's just my thoughts on this. So because I very much agree with the need for proactive targeted marketing, I am a fan of utilizing the technology and the AI to, to help us with this. I also understand Nick's, Nick's thought process behind this. With that being said, at the point that we're at right now, moving forward with this today, we, we don't have an established capital campaign. We don't have money to draw from. Where I, where I kind of fall. Where I, where I kind of fall on this is if we're not, if, if the city's not obligated to an annual payment for three years, I would fall on kind of the side of, of moving forward with it today and then, and then working with Inc. as a partner. Because you're right, Nick, we are partners in this. Working with Inc. as a partner and understanding what that capital campaign looks like as you're bringing in those commitments for one year, three years, you said three-year commitments, as you're bringing those in. And then working with us, because we're partnering in this, Inc. working directly with the commission to say, to David's point, okay, we've got $50,000 from the David Diller Foundation. What, what do we want to, what does Inc. and the commission want to do with that $50,000? Do we want to use that to buy down our investment on both sides? Or do we want to use that to increase our marketing? I think that that's, that creates a partnership with Inc. committed today to spending their $50,000, their half, and us committed to spending our half. I think the capital campaign is something that we would be able to come together and figure out how that, how we, how we best invest that. Because maybe the point is, we were able to use that $50,000 to move up to the next tier. But I, I, I think that to Nick's, and I appreciate Nick's comments on this. I think to Nick's point, there's, we want, we want to be partners and we want to be able to work with Inc. to understand how this moves forward. I'm, again, I'm a, I'm a big supporter of the project, so. So is that, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying, Nick? As we, as we move forward?
I don't agree with it, but yeah.
I know, that's fine. I'm just telling you guys where I, where I fall on this, so. Is there any other discussion up here before we call the vote to table?
And so just so I have clarification, to table until the next meeting? Or what would be the?
Until their next meeting.
Okay.
And you don't have a March meeting, so you'd have an April meeting? So it'd be the second, the second city commission meeting at that point?
Right.
Okay. So that, so it's to table until the second, until after their next meeting to, so they can discuss this? Okay. All those in favor of tabling, of, of the motion to table this until after the Inc. meeting, which, after, after April's Inc. meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Aye.
No. Aye.
Motion to table falls three to two. Two, that's what I meant to say. Two to three. That's what I said, two to three. Okay. So now we're back on this item, which we've discussed. So is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the funding request in the amount of $50,000 from the Economic Development Sales Tax Fund for the purpose of funding the agreements with Candid Marketing and Kansas Global Trade Services and El Dorado Inc.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion? Okay. I'm going to say again, just to get it on the record in this discussion point, that we're committing $50,000 to this year in this motion. And that we're not on the hook for year two or three of this contract until we bring it back to a vote.
That's correct.
And as my part of the discussion, I would encourage city staff to work with El Dorado Inc. to get back before us to talk about how we address the potential partner funds that come in through this partnership, through the capital campaign, and how those are best applied if we want year two and three to go as smoothly as this has. Okay? That's my, any other, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve this funding request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Aye. Motion carries whatever, three to two. Next on the agenda, a special use permit, application 3515 West Tawanda.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, you see on the screen there this evening, Darren Schmidt, who lives at 3515 West Tawanda Avenue, is requesting a special use permit to allow an 1,800 square foot accessory structure to be built on his property at the address previously mentioned. The Plenary Commission held a public hearing February 27th and recommended approval six to O. And you can see the subject property right here. Second shot, this would be a site plan that he drew out for us of, it's quite a large parcel out, out there on that West Tawanda College Acres area. So staff recommended approval as well as the Plenary Commission. It fits within the other uses you see out in the area. There's other large accessory structures out there. So we're asking you to consider approval of this S U P for the 1,800 square foot accessory structure. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Do you all have any questions or do I have a motion on the special use permit for the accessory structure 3515 West Tawanda?
I move to approve case number 20 dash 01 dash S U P, requesting a special use permit for a 1,800 square foot accessory structure at 3515 West Tawanda Avenue to be completed within two years and that ordinance number.
G 1322.
What she said, be approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. And that's what she said. Roll call vote, please. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes. Motion carries five O.
Kuda Thuket.
Kuda Thuket. Uh, application to rezone 2765 Southwest Highway 54.
Yes, the subject property is located east of town in our, the city of El Dorado's extraterritorial jurisdiction area where we have zoning authority outside of our city limits. What the request here is, this area bordered by the white line is asking to be rezoned to C1. Currently, you can see some mixed uses out here. So this is actual current zoning. So AR is agricultural residential. You'll see pasture to the north, the sale barn to the west. You see a, a mix of residential around that. C1 over here, which is a deer crow campground. MP is mobile home or manufactured home parks. And then another cluster of R1. When, this, this map illustrates those areas out there that are currently non-residential use. So the subject property that we're discussing tonight is currently not used. It's so what we would consider a non-conforming situation. The building, the use of the property has been there for a number of years and when the county implemented zoning, it was assigned residential. So that use is allowed, is allowed to continue as a non-conforming use. And what really is the driver here this evening is the applicant is asking to build an additional building. So we think it makes a lot of sense. Future land use projects that is being commercial in a Butts Highway 54, so makes a lot of sense. The Plenary Commission as well held their public hearing on this, voted recommended approval six to O. And as well as the Butler County Commission reviewed this proposal as well and voted to recommend approval of, of this.
What's your ordinance number?
G 1323, Mayor Young?
Yep.
What is it, what's on this list?
13.
It's in, it's in Southwest. And then it's the Southeast, so we did only agenda, maybe.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I move to approve case number 20 dash O1 dash R E Z, requesting a rezone of 1.6 acres at 2765 Southeast Highway 54 to C1, General Business District. And that ordinance G 1323 be approved. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, Tim.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five O. Next on the agenda, special use permit application, 1360 Southwest Highway 77.
Yeah, it's nine of zoning items, so. The applicant, Arthur Pollam, is requesting a special use permit specifically to construct what we would consider by definition, an accessory apartment. So what he is proposing to do is build what he has coined as a mother-in-law home on his property, located just south of town. You see the area right here to the west, that's AJ Services as you leave south out of town. So he owns his property right here to the east. It is zone agricultural residential. Mr. Pollam is proposing to construct a structure somewhere in this area. There are some issues on the property owns primarily with floodplain. All of that permitting as far as the structure inspections, meaning the floodplain requirements would all go through Butler County, being this is zoning request and us having jurisdiction out there, the special use permit to allow an accessory structure comes to you all for consideration tonight. Plenary Commission held that hearing on February 27th, recommended approval six to O. As well as the Butler County Commission reviewed this proposal and voted to recommend approval.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve case number 20 dash O2 dash S U P, requesting a S U P for accessories apartment at 1360 Southwest Highway 77. And that ordinance number.
G 1344.
Be approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tim.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes, please. Motion carries five O. Agenda item number 16, acquisition of 416 North Arthur Street.
Well, the property that you have in front of you has been a property that the city has been working on enforcing various codes on. As you can see, the, the record, including the packet demonstrates that there's been quite a few said incidents that we've been, that Sarah Hagan's been working on over the years. I believe it begins, the dateline, the timeline begins in 2009 and you can kind of see how that, that all has transpired. Incidentally, the property owner was, my understanding was due to come to court and Sarah met with the property owner and worked out an arrangement whereby property owner would sell or deed the property over to the city at no cost, other than the current $3,005.20 due in delinquent taxes. Demolition would begin, would be a simple tear down of the property. Public Works may have the time to complete the project as per their schedule allows. And we estimate that would cost about $4,000 if we had a contractor. So we could have $7,000-ish in the property if we elected to contract out the demolition. If we do it internally, then we'll have about a little over $3,000. But as you can see, there was a petition, an unofficial petition, but a petition nonetheless, from some of the neighbor, neighbors and their complaints regarding the property. So we are requesting the commission authorize approval of the purchase of this property so we can then take steps to abate the issue and raise the structure.
I'm assuming it's uninhabited?
It is.
We will, yeah. It is. It, it's one that's been on, is, what has seriously been up next on your, let's talk about condemning list.
Hydro supply, it's a bad shit.
Some good news maybe to report out of the building demolition fund. Going through the condemnation procedure last year with you all and talking about that and the costs associated with that. Thankfully, we've, we've been repaid by three properties for the city stepping in and doing that demolition. So that was, we didn't foresee that, so, but that is good news to want to report.
As in you sold those, those properties?
As in the owner of the property wrote the check.
Oh.
To reverse.
Really?
Has the feral cat population been dealt with at this house?
Probably will be when we tear it down. Yes.
No, 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 no.
I know animal control will be involved.
Yes, I'm sure.
And we will, we will.
We've checked on them a couple of times. We'll check on them some more.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
You what?
We will not harm any cats in taking this house down.
Okay.
Knowingly.
No, no, no. Don't be that way.
It might happen.
They're feral.
Yeah.
I understand they're feral, but I don't want you knocking the roof down and wiping out.
Sure. I get that.
Be, be, be a little civil about this.
Yeah.
Human. Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all.
Okay. Then I may say yes.
And then the plan for this lot would be immediately turned around and, and I'm sure we would have some interest out there for someone to build on.
Sure, yeah.
So we get that return. So David talks about the funds we'd have to allocate and pay in the back taxes and potentially if we have to contract the demo, feel good we could get a return on that.
All right, you ready? Ready for a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to acquire 416 North Arthur and sign all associated paperwork.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just to clarify, the amount that we're spending is just the back taxes and the demo cost.
If we, if we like to demo, yes.
You can save, you can save the house, okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five O.
Rather should we elect to have a public works fire?
Yeah, I got you. Okay. City Commission and Advisory Board updates. Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have to.
Library Board met. Talked about address code. Wasn't really a problem that the board thought. And if there ever was, it would be, you know, up to the director to handle it, as she always handles everything, very professionally. So that was a non-issue. Talked a little bit about, they have these two stained glass windows that used to be up. They just, they're in frames and they used to hang. They're really pretty. Like to get them up sometime. I'm looking into it with another guy and see what we can do to get that done. I guess she sent an email out. Cindy was reading it to me while I was eating supper. We're going to do a soft closing, I think. Is it tomorrow? People can come up to the library and they'll bring stuff out to you, but they're not going to let people go in there and wander around and look for stuff. And then, believe it or not, there's a picture when you go into the library of Mr. Bradford sitting there, smoking a cigarette. Somebody bitched about that. Which I couldn't believe, but I don't know what they think they're going to do. Go paint it out or, but anyway.
You're going to leave it hanging, aren't you?
You damn right we are.
I'll make sure.
But I couldn't believe it, somebody. Of course I don't believe about anything anymore, but. Something else. But I forgot, so that's all I got.
Me and I have, it's been canceled, so I don't have anything.
We had CTC last week. We had CTC last week. That group was presented with the marketing material for the overall campaign for the city. They were going to review it after, get questions back tomorrow, and we had three meetings set up for tomorrow and the next day, and all that got canceled. But I, I, we got some really good input responses from that group. I've got some new members with a few different perspectives, which was really good. I think, like, we got a good group over there, so. One thing that I keep forgetting, and I think this is going to go to Brad or Public Water Sewer, Central heading to about a half a block east of Haverhill. On the north side of the road, there is a concrete divot and a, out of splice in the concrete that's always wet, 110 degrees, and it's still watering that thing. Is that us? Okay, yeah.
So that, that's been there for quite a while. It's, it's something that we've tested, it is not, it is not drinking water, it's not potable water, it's not a, a water leak. And so understanding that, you've got, it's named Constant Creek for a reason, I mean, it's, it's constantly wet down there. And, and that concrete intersection sits on a rock ledge. You've got the bridge right there, so what we're assuming is the water fountain's weakest point is sprouting up right there. You'll see it around the medians as well sometimes. We have had, we have bored perforated pipe underneath to try to soak some of that up. Last time we paved Central Avenue there, we dug that thing out as deep as we could at that concrete joint and put some rock and material and, and really laid a thick lift asphalt to try to seal that off, but it's, it's shown up again.
Is it like a spring?
Yeah.
What you're saying is a spring?
You've got that rock there around Constant Creek, constantly, you know, it, it is always running. I don't think I've ever seen.
It was just one, like, it was really cold the other day and it iced up, and, and then I asked a highway guy, and he was like, I don't know, that thing's been there for 20 years, sure it's the city pipeline or whatever. I was like, okay, well, let me ask.
Yeah. And, and we've gone out in, in, in public utilities as test kits, so anytime there's something that folks, is this a water leak, there, we, we want to know that. We want to go out and check that. And so, I mean, the first telltale is going to be, does it have any chlorine in it?
I just, I'm trying to answer someone's question, I keep forgetting to ask you guys.
We, we hear about that one a lot as well. I think the overall solution is if there is a reconstruction of that intersection, then we look at a underdrain system and that sort of thing, but quite, quite costly. And, and it's a nuisance, and it's a nuisance definitely, it's a hazard when it's icy out, you know, cold out.
Winter, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. We, we had a El Dorado Facilities Authority, Educational Facilities Authority of Butler County meeting.
EFA B C.
Stadium meeting, last week or the week before. Things are going good, we, we did kind of an orientation that night. The meeting prior to that, the, the EFA B C had to spend some of their money to, to upgrade some equipment or to buy some new equipment that had broken over time in their production room, but seems like things are kind of moving along there pretty good. There's some, some work that needs to be done that they're going to, the administrators are working together to get that stuff facilitated, so. Seemed like things were going smoothly.
Do they have a estimate yet on that canopy overhang?
They don't have the estimate for us yet. And then just kind of an interesting tidbit I wanted to share with you guys, I got a, I got a call this morning from a gentleman in, in Topeka, and he said, he called me, like, because I'm the mayor, and so he said, hey, he gave me his name, and he said, I'm a sports memorabilia collector, and I ran across this box of baseball cards, and I found a couple of mint condition rookie cards for a guy named Tom Borland, who was born in El Dorado in 1933, moved from El Dorado when he was young, kind of young, and to Oklahoma, ended up playing for the Boston Red Sox. He's in our El Dorado Baseball Hall of Fame, in the, in Cooperstown, in the Major League Baseball Hall of Fame. Stillwater, so the OSU Baseball Hall of Fame. Anyway, he wanted me to check and see if there was, if Tom's family was still in town. He wanted to just give them their cards, because he kind of does that, he finds old cards and just tries to get it back to family members. I found Tom's, Tom passed away in 2016, I think. I got ahold of his son today, who lives in Stillwater and runs the family tire shop, Victor, and got Victor in touch with this guy from Topeka. Victor was pretty excited to get a couple of his dad's baseball cards back. An interesting story that Victor told me is after his dad died, his mom just very recently remarried, and Victor got to go and take a tour at Fenway, a free tour, and he was, they were super excited to have him, because he's, they think he's probably the only kid who has two dads that played for the Red Sox, because his mom remarried his dad's catcher, whose wife, whose wife had recently passed away too, so they, anyway. So it was a great family story, spent some great time talking, but it was, it was, it was neat to have somebody call and really search out, trying to find the family of this guy. And, and like I said, he's in the El Dorado Baseball Hall of Fame and Major League Baseball Hall of Fame. Kind of a neat story, and I think it's a, an opportunity to look at the good that some people do and, and when they can kind of go out of their way to just, he just wants to give this to somebody that it might mean something to, so. It's kind of cool, neat, neat experience for me today, so I thought I'd share that with all of you. City manager report.
Yes, so included in your package, you'll see that I'm supposed to do the fourth quarter of the nature report. I apologize, that is, the changing dynamics of the situation we're in, I've been trying to get all that orchestrated and completed that, but we'll get that to you here very So far, most of the activities throughout town have been canceled. The only thing that's kind of outstanding right now is the community dialogue with the city manager, the next one scheduled for April 1st at 9:00 AM at Spangles. Presently, that's still a little bit subject to, to change. As the mayor's previously mentioned, all of our adult and youth activities are suspended for the time being. We're closing the lobbies of all of our facilities, and I'm sure there's a couple of things, but in a nutshell, we're kind of doing what the president's or asked us to do so we can get, and I, and I think the important thing, some people might be like, well, why are they doing that? There's not a lot of coronavirus outbreaks in Kansas, so it seems like it's a little overkill. I think in looking at this and talking to staff, we've had quite a few extensive conversations about it, and I guess my philosophy is, it's better, let's, let's prevent it first before it outbreaks, so that we can maybe avoid it. All the things that are happening in Europe and what was going on in China, so if we can avoid all that, we're all the better for it. And the other thing that we look at, the city has essential services to the public, these things, we, we can't shut it off. We have to provide water, we have to provide blood, we have to provide fire protection. So to the extent that we can minimize traffic in and out of our facilities means the lower probability that someone will get it in our facility and then the fire department gets it, and then we're, we're in a world of hurt. Fire Chief Hague and staff, actually this morning we had a special session to talk about the situation, and he mentioned that he had been on the phone with a fire department in Washington. And I don't know what department it was or where it was actually at, but they were down, two thirds of their department was quarantined. And if we were down to two thirds of our department, we wouldn't be able to fight grass fires when they kick back up here soon, and we, our, our response would be hampered significantly. So we elected to make the decision, I elected to make the decision to shut that down because we, we can't be two thirds down. We have to, we have to be, we have to have our, our facilities in check, and we have to have our people ready to respond and serve the public. So if people have any questions, they can call City Hall, 321-9100, but that's kind of the rationale behind why we made the decision when we made it, and we'll make the changes subject to changing circumstances as we see fit, so that's what we have.
That's all you got?
That's all I got. We, we have an executive session. I think what I'll need is probably 20 minutes for that.
Okay. You know, I know that there's been a run at the stores on toilet paper. I just, we talked about this ahead of time, I just want to remind the public that don't, not to flush paper towels down into, into the toilet or sewer system, our guys are going to be busy enough, making sure things keep running and clogging things up with paper towels may be a problem, so.
Socks.
Yeah, that's actually a good point. The only thing you should flush is toilet paper. Even if it says flushable on the label, don't flush it, because it, it will either plug up your sewer service line or will do something, something downstream, and it'll cause problems. Only flush toilet paper, we appreciate it.
All right, do I have a motion for, so we are moving into, we've got to go to executive session to discuss something with our attorney, so do I have a motion to move into?
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client exceptions under KSA 754319B2 for the purposes of discussing ongoing legal issues and to reconvene the meeting at 8:30 PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries five oh.